Okay, we are calling this meeting to order. Wendy is absent, everyone else is present. And we're gonna wait for Alan, because he wasn't ready, I don't think.
Meeting of the Sebago School Board on 26 April at 7:07, 7:05 PM. Go ahead.
I'll start again. We're all present, except for Wendy Newcomb, who is not here. She has an excused absence. Okay. Where's the stuff? Right here. The flag is over here. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any agenda adjustments tonight?
We do. I'd like to add an action item for the committee to approve an out-of-state field trip.
Okay. So we will add that as 10G.
Thank you.
And need in motion to do that?
Yep, we need a motion.
Let's have a motion to do that. Actually, I...
I'm not sure that...
I'm not sure what we do when we're adjusting the agenda.
No, no.
I say we don't today.
Okay. And if Roberts is out there anywhere and wants to speak now, let him first speak, or the whole world speaks.
Feel free to blame that on me.
Okay.
Let the record show. Dave bears all the responsibility.
Okay. Minutes for our March 15th special school meeting.
Special school meeting.
Did anybody have any adjustments that need to be made? Okay. Alan?
The only thing I had was just a typo.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Okay. And I'd like a motion to approve those.
Move to approve the minutes of March 15th.
So move.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. Then we come to the minutes of the executive session of March 22nd. Did anybody have any adjustments to those minutes? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
Thank you, Joe.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
And by way of just... When I had drafted them, I put the two sessions together because they were on the same day abutting each other. And then we separated it out, and I think this makes sense.
It does. It does make sense. Thank you. Okay. Then we have the minutes for our regular meeting of March 22nd. And I would like a motion to revisit these minutes at our next meeting, so that we can go over them again.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay.
I assume that was in motion table?
Yes. Motion table. Okay. That takes care of minutes. All right. And I'm gonna cut away from these.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, public comments on agenda items. And I have Dana Batchelder.
Excuse me. I'm here for the mowing bid. And I just have some insight, I hope, or some ideas that would help that move better in the future. Written proposal, so contractors are all on the same page.
Can I interrupt for just one second? Can I have you make your public comment when we get to number six on the bids?
It's okay here.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's okay here.
Okay. Can I fin... Okay, I'm gonna... Flustered. Okay. Just to remind everybody, or it may be new information for people, we have a policy, B-E-D-H, that is titled "Public Participation at School Committee Meetings", and it's about public comment. So the guidelines, I'm just going to read. A. Citizens and employees of the school unit are welcome to participate as provided in this policy. Others may be recognized to speak at the chair's discretion. Individual employees and/or employee groups will not be permitted to discuss matters for which complaint or grievance procedures are provided. B. The chair may limit the time allotted for comments on a particular topic, as well as the time each individual may speak. C. In the event of a sizable audience, the chair may require persons interested in speaking to sign up so they may be called on in a fair and efficient manner. D. During the time set aside for public participation, the chair will be responsible for recognizing all speakers who must identify themselves as they begin talking, and that means first and last name and street address for everybody. E. Speakers are not permitted to share gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. F. All speakers are to address the chair and direct questions or comments to particular school committee members or the superintendent only with approval of the chair. Requests for information or concerns that require further research may be referred to the superintendent to be addressed at a later time. G. Members of the school committee and the superintendent may ask questions of any person who addresses the school committee, but are expected to refrain from arguing or debating issues. Questions must be addressed through the chair. H. No complaints or allegations will be allowed at school committee meetings concerning any person employed by the school system or against particular students. Personal matters or complaints concerning student or staff issues will not be considered in a public meeting, but will be referred through established policies and procedures. I. In order to make efficient use of meeting time, the school committee discourages duplication or repetition of comments to the school committee. The school committee requests that groups or organizations be represented by designated spokespeople. J. The chair has the authority to stop any presentation that violates these guidelines or the privacy rights of others. K. Persons who disrupt the meeting may be asked to leave, and the chair may request law enforcement assistance as necessary to restore order. Let's hope we never have that happen. But these are... We have a huge manual of policies. They are the rules that we are required to follow. So I just wanted to revisit that. I don't think I've read that out before, so it's good to refresh everybody's minds. Okay. Dana, I'm so sorry I interrupted you. You have the floor.
Dana Batchelder, 273 Sebago Road, right next door. I'm here in regards to the mowing contract bid. In this year, the bid... There was no bid proposal, written bid proposal. Makes it kind of difficult to be sure all contractors are on the same page. A walk-through is good, and that should be somewhat of a requirement, I think. A lot of times, there's a pre-bid day that all contractors that are interested can come and have one walk-through. But what happens is this... Some things get forgotten or overlooked when there's a walk-through. I've been doing the mowing here for a while, and there's lots of little things that I do that I don't even remember to say anything about it, or just all kinds of little stuff. But that would just be in the future. That would be a good thing, to have some sort of a spec written. I can give you templates that I get from other municipalities that do the same kind of thing. Who's the other? Oh. The bid date to be turned in would be nice if it was coordinated to the school being open. So us guys didn't wait till the last day to hand-deliver. There's somebody here. I mean, I like the custodian, all, but he's not really the one I want to leave that with.
But they made it.
They made it. Oh, we did. We went through some hoops. And the other is actually to do with certificates of insurance. That's a big thing for me, because insurance is terribly expensive. And when the shoveling of the walkways for last season, I was right out of the water, because it was so expensive. And I'm just really curious if that can be really followed up on to verify that the individual, whether it's me or whoever it is, is actually covered, because I do live next door. And if the school gets sued, because somebody slipped and fell and their insurance is lapsed, it's gonna fall into the laps of the school, and could affect my property taxes. And I'm just... That's all I had to work. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Okay. We are up to superintendent's report.
Great. So I am now going to open the bids for snow removal and plowing. We received one bid for snow removal. And... That bid is from OPN Dock and Yard for $3,000 per year. And includes certificate of insurance naming us as the co-insured. I might have just told you something that's not true. Doesn't name us as co-insured. So I'm really appreciating, Dana, the professional feedback you gave. We're opening bids today. We'll read them into the record. We are going to... Anyone who has not had a walk-through on the property will be given the opportunity to do a walk-through and withdraw their bid, if it's not what they thought they were bidding on. So no one's gonna have a chance to rebid, but they'll be able to withdraw. So I'm gonna read through the four bids that we received. And this is for mowing and lawn maintenance from Mr. Maintenance Man. Includes certificate of insurance. And this is $4,122.96 per year. And Dana, what's the... There's a second number, which is $2,368.88 for a three-year contract?
I've got the boss with me.
Okay.
These counts receivable and payable. Can we see that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It's actually the exact same as my last bid. It was $4,000. I didn't change daily.
So that's for a total of?
Yeah, it's total of $12,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a one that I missed in front of that, too?
Yeah.
Got it, got it, got it. All right, great. This next one is from Aries Landscaping and Maintenance. Includes a certificate of liability insurance, a resume, a schedule, and it is for $23,000 per year for three years. Third bid for mowing and cleanup is from Nichols Property Management. Does not include a certificate of insurance, and is for $2,600 per year. And the fourth bid is from OPN Dock and Yard, and includes a certificate of insurance, and is for $5,500 per year. So like I said, two of the four bidders have done the walk-through. Two have not. I'll give them an opportunity to make sure that they understand what they have bid on and withdraw if they want. And we will move forward with awarding contracts, hopefully before the end of the week.
Listen, if I can. Maggi?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You may.
This is the prime example of why a bid spec is so vitally important, because how many times is somebody planning on mowing or trimming? And how well are they gonna coordinate with, you know, the rec department when it comes to games, that sort of thing? I know the previous contractor that was here before I took over, they mowed four times for the whole year. And I outbid them, because there was no way I was gonna look at that mess again. I had to mow for Sebago days, because they weren't doing their job yet. So that's just an example of why we need to make sure everybody's on the same level playing field.
Agreed, and thank you.
That's why I'm here.
And I'm here to learn as well. And then, if I may, just briefly the rest of my report. We have a personnel item. I accepted the resignation of our principal and director of transportation services, Kirsten Goff, effective June 30th. I just want to leave it at that right now. We will have a lot more to thank Kirsten for going forward, and she'll share her plans in the future. So because of that, we have a hiring process. Applications for the position have been advertised. They close on May 2nd. We met today with the staff to identify qualifications and criteria to use in the screening process. We will screen applications next week after the position posting closes, and we hope to interview in the second week of May. It's our hope to bring a candidate to the committee at our May meeting. We're looking for committee members who want to be part of that process, and I think that Maggie and Chris volunteered to be part of that. And we'll figure out timing of that. And then, last thing I have. We were approached by an organization called... It's the Maine Workforce Development Compact. It's funded through the Harold Alphon Center for the Advancement of Maine's Workforce. The compact is designed to upgrade workers' skills while still employed and provide support for community college courses taken towards earning a degree. So the compact provides up to $1,200 per employee for professional training in the first year, and up to $600 per employee for the second year. Those trainings can be job-specific, and the district would say what they are. If it meets the criteria, we refund it. And in addition to that, any of our employees, if we go forward, provide $425 scholarship for the first year for Maine Community College, and $212 for the second year for employees who want to take courses to further their education. So we're looking at that as a way to help support our professional development, instruction, and student support. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have a presentation on our fiscal year '22 audit and our fiscal year '21 financial audit. Yes, no?
Yeah. FY '21 fiscal audit and FY '22 year-to-date. So I'd like to welcome... May I?
Yes, please.
Good. I'd like to welcome our finance team, Mark Roy and Susan Tuttle. As many of you know, the Sebago School Department has a contract with Derry, Royer, and Talbot...
Derry, Talbot, Royer.
...to provide our financial services, also doing some of our HR functions. So Susan is who we deal with on the day-to-day, and Mark provides those docu-sign forms that all of you are attending to in a timely way. Looking across the committee for accounts payable and payroll warrants. So Mark, Susan, not sure who's taking lead, but thank you for being here. It is an annual requirement that the committee receive the audit of the previous year's finances. I think it's very important to make that transparent, and we're glad you're here for the first time.
Sure.
Hopefully not the last.
So I added, not in the manila papers, but next to your manila papers, a packet of various documents. And I'll just go through them.
Did you get this?
Quickly, yeah, Dana. So the first set are all from the school's auditor, which is Peter Hall, CPA, LLC. So the first one I'll talk to is this one, where it says "Management's Responsibility for Financial Statements and Bold" on the first page. So this is the auditor's report on the financial statements for FY '21. As the school's finance business management team, we prepare the financial statements for the school, and then we submit them to the auditor to audit. And if you're unfamiliar with what an audit is, a financial statement audit is simply an independent third-party, Peter Hall, CPA, obtaining sufficient appropriate evidence in order to determine what we're telling you, right? What we're providing for financial statements is materially accurate, basically is what it comes down to. And by him being an independent auditor, it provides some reasonable assurance that what we're telling you is materially accurate. So a financial statement audit is his report, his opinion on whether or not he thinks they are materially fairly stated or not. And so that's what this report is. You can read it afterwards if you'd want, but just to give you a brief summary of what the different sections of the audit report are. The first paragraph basically tells you what he audited, which was the FY '21 financial statements. And then, the second paragraph talks about management's responsibilities for the financial statements, meaning the school's management using our services is responsible for preparing those financial statements and also maintaining internal controls over those financial statements. The auditor's responsibility is the second set of paragraphs, which says that his responsibility is simply to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence in order to render an opinion. And it talks about some various procedures that an auditor generally performs. And then he concludes that he believes he has sufficient... He's obtained enough evidence to render an opinion. On the second page is where his opinions are. Normally, it's one opinion, but because technically there are multiple opinion units for these governmental financial statements, they actually are multiple opinions. And in his opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities and each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Sebago School Department as of June 30, 2021. So basically, he's saying, yes, the financial statements are fairly presented. There's an emphasis of matter paragraph that simply says that the school department is still part of the town, and so while the school department's financial statements are, if you will, its own fiscal entity, they're also incorporated into the town's. So it's not the full town's financial statements, and that's what basically was in one of the audited financial statements. And he's just reemphasizing that here so that people are aware that this isn't the full town's audit. The town itself gets audited. Our firm audits the town. And so we'll be issuing our own audit opinion on those financial statements later. Other matters... There are two different other matters that they talk about or that he talks about. The supplementary information are the additional schedules. And basically, he's saying that those schedules are based on and tie out to the financial statements that he audited. And then, the required supplementary information. There's two... Under Gatsby's reporting standard, there's two required supplementary types of supplementary information. There's the management's discussion and analysis, which is basically our analysis of this year and last... FY '21 compared to FY '20, as well as some comments. That's required by Gatsby's reporting standards, as well as the budgetary comparison schedule, which compares the school's budget to actual results. One thing to note is that, under AICPA standards, those aren't audited, and he says as much here. So even though they are part of the basic financial statements, he does not subject them to audit procedures, and doesn't render an opinion on them. However, as a matter of practice, auditors still review them and make sure that they're not crazy wrong, right? If they were, we would provide some sort of emphasis of matter, like, yeah, everything else is fine. The stuff we didn't audit looks kinda hokey. So that's this. And that's what you're looking for. It's basically an unmodified opinion, is what we call it. It says that the financial statements themselves are presented fairly. The second report that you have from Peter Hall, CPA, is a required communication to those charged with governance, basically the board. It's also referred to as a SAS 114 letter, which is a technical term for it. And the purpose of this communication in written format is for the auditor communicate sufficient information to board members in order to execute their oversight responsibility, their oversight duties responsibly. So there's just... This is generally a boilerplate type of letter, right? Essentially, issue the same letter to all clients, unless there's something that needs to be kind of edited in here to bring attention to the board. So again, the paragraphs just kind of tell you what he did in terms of the audit, you know, what financial statements he audited, what his responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards are. Then he talked about... He just mentions what the scope and timing of the audit were, whether there were any significant audit findings. And he says that there were no significant audit findings. Qualitative aspects of accounting practices. And this is where, if there were any areas that management, under proper accounting rules, has the ability to make estimates and judgments, that bias could be introduced into the financial system. That's where he would let you know, hey, just be aware, management is certainly allowed to make these judgments and estimates. And if he found them reasonable, he'll say as such, which he does here. If he found them unreasonable, he would also say as such. And also, he would have proposed adjusting journal entries for those. So basically, he talks about that there's no significant transactions. He talks about the estimates that were allowed to make, and that he didn't find any issues with them. He... They have a paragraph here on difficulties encountered in forming the audit, and he said that there were none. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So again, the financial statements are prepared on a materiality basis, right? We're not concerned with one- or $2 errors or even, you know, $5,000 errors. Depends, right? Obviously, there's quantitative... Obviously, there's quantitative and qualitative aspects of materiality. But in general, it's, you know, its materiality threshold is what would reasonably influence the economic decisions of the users. And so if something is a misstatement or omitted that is under that threshold of possibly influencing somebody's economic decisions, then it's material, I mean, it's not material, anything over that it is. Anything that's uncorrected, he can still render a clean opinion, and it's just that he says that, yeah, it's a misstatement, but, you know, under Gatsby's standards, but it's not a material misstatement, and therefore it doesn't have to be corrected. So when it comes to the, when it comes to the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits, obligations, schedules that are required, there's one for the main curves that I don't bother to put together in the financial statements. First of all, it doesn't really tell the users anything, and secondly, it's not, it has no effect on the financial statements themselves. It's really just an additional schedule. And so every year, he says the same thing. He's like, hey, do you want to include this? And I said, no, not really, because it's not worth my time to put it together, and nobody makes their economic decisions off of this main curves OPEB thing that has to be reported as part of the school's financials. And so he agrees with that, that it's not material, and he just makes sure that you're aware of it. Then the next paragraph is disagreements with management. There were none. Management representations, we provide him representation, meaning we tell him that basically we've given him all the information that he's looking for, that we're not hiding anything, but he pays for it. Consultations with other independent accountants, we haven't had any. If he did, or if we did, we wouldn't necessarily have to tell him, but he's just not aware that we had any consultations. We haven't. And then other audit findings and issues, and those really, again, just talk about the RSI, the required supplementary information, that it's not audited, and then the other emphasis of matter paragraph stuff. So again, this is generally boilerplate. You can read through it if you want, but I expect you to, but there's nothing that really warrants, you know, crazy amounts of attention. And then the third letter from him is another written communication to those charged with governance. It is not a required communication unless he finds during the course of the audit a material weakness or a significant deficiency. So it's not required unless he finds those weaknesses in internal control, or he has the option of issuing this report, even though it's not required, to say that no material weaknesses were found, which is what, why he issued this report. And so you'll see in the third paragraph, the second to last sentence, that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses, however material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified. So because he hasn't identified anything, it's really his option to issue this report or not, and he did. So those are the, those are the auditor's reports on the financial statements. I did not print off the entire 50-page set of financial statements. I figured if you wanted those, you can look at them. The school has them in electronic format. We can print them off for you if you'd like, hard copy, but we can always send them to you in email. But I did print off just some fun financial statements as of June 30th, so that you could see where the school stood as of June 30th of last year, given that it's now April and, you know, the audit was only finished in March. But given that it's now April, it doesn't really provide you with any decision usefulness, but it's just something that you might want to look at. The only thing that you may be interested in is on the schedule that has page 33 at the bottom. This is your budget to actual, which is what I find the board members are most concerned with when it comes to activity during the year, how they're doing compared to budget to actual. You'll see four columns. The first column is the original budget, and then the second column is the final budget. If there are any differences between, changes between the original adopted budget and the final budget, that's what's presented here. The only changes that are here are just differences in how much was budgeted in individual accounts, because under state statute, there's what they call a 5% rule. You can move up to 5% of budget category to another budget category, provided that you're not going to be over expended on either of those. And so that's what those adjustments were in the expenditures, so you will see some differences in the numbers, but the overall total expenditures, basically the total appropriations doesn't change. It was 3.61 million with the original budget, that's the final budget as well. The actual results were that, so the school budgeted to have, estimated to have $3.5 million worth of revenues. You can see at the top portion there, actual, or 3,554,000, actual results were 3,597,000. So there was $43,000 more in revenue than budgeted. And then from the expenditures side, total expenditures were 3 million, or 3,691,000, and actual expenditures were 3,482,000, which means the school came in under budget by 209,000 for expenditures. And so the net between those, the more than, more revenues than they budgeted and less expenditures than budgeted meant that the school came in $253,000 more than what it had expected. Most of that was due to the surplus monies that we got through COVID, which means even though they weren't really designed to replace what would normally be general fund expenditures, the reality is, well, yeah, when we buy supplies, we budget for supplies, and we can spend those supplies using federal COVID money, they kind of replace it, not really intended to, but they kind of do. So that's why we had some extra cash. That all closes to the general fund, and so that surplus, so for the year, there was $115,000 surplus into the general fund. That all goes into the general fund's unassigned fund balance to be carried forward into FY 22, which is where we're at now. So we're in the third quarter of FY 22, and you have a packet that has, it looks like this, it says, as of March 31st, 2022. And so every quarter, Susan prepares this for you, and the finance committee of the school board looks at these. I don't know if the entire, I don't know if the entire board gets these on board.
We haven't done them so far. We've met with the finance committee.
Okay, yeah. But this is, we prepared this for you, just to give you an update on where we're at, where the school's at, and Susan provides her comments, and so she can do so now if she'd like, but she also is a little hoarse, so.
Yeah, I don't always sound like I'm dying.
Not a pony, by the way. I don't mean that type of.
I'm stronger than you.
And then her throat is a little hoarse.
Yes. I guess the only other thing I want to mention there is that the, so Sebago became its own entity July 1st, 2018, correct?
Yeah.
And that first year was, the budget process was literally a shot in the dark. We really didn't know. We did our best, but we did end up with quite a deficit that we've been trying to work our way back from the last couple of years. So it really was last year FY 21 and the help of all the COVID money. I looked it up earlier, it was $533,000 to be exact. That helped us last year. And so we were finally able to establish that $100,000 reserve, the unanticipated cost reserve. That balance does still sit there, and we're hoping to add to it at the end of this year. But as of March 31st, we are in solid position to finish out the year. Cash on hand is just over $320,000, and we still have almost $850,000 in receivables from the town's education assessment that we received monthly and the state EPS subsidy. Payables, those are pretty trivial at this time, and accrued salaries are at about, almost $100,000. We do accrue those quarterly, and what that represents is throughout the year, we accrue what the year-round, or not just teachers, but the people who are September 1 contracts, and they get paid throughout the summer. We want their entire contract, the cost of their contracts, to be recorded by June 30th. So what we do is we accrue it quarterly so that at June 30th, all of those expenditures have been recorded on the books. They're just accrued as payable because they don't get paid out until the summer months. So we're expecting the end of, that total balance to be about $140,000 at year-end. And obviously, then we get down to our fund balance section, which is really just what is left over after your assets minus your liabilities. So the unassigned fund balance right now is about $968,000, and that just seems like a really high number, but that is just because we've recognized essentially all of the year's revenue, which is from the town and the state, but we've really only recognized three quarters' worth of the year's expenditures. So as we get through the last quarter of the year, that unassigned fund balance will continue to decrease because it will absorb those costs.
You continue to caution the superintendent about spending those funds.
And then in the next column, we have the school lunch fund. That has continued to maintain a positive fund balance. I do want to point out that is solely because of the help of the $40,000 transfer in from the general fund that is budgeted as in all other expenditures. It started the year with a fund balance of about $12,000, which I think last year was also the first time that we made it into the green. That was carrying an accumulated deficit as well for a couple of years. So we're in the green, we're still in the green, but that is only because of the budgeted transfer in to help on that program. And then in the third column is the other governmental funds, and this is the aggregate of multiple non-major special revenue funds, which I will circle back to. On the second page, statement of revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance is just a fancy way of saying the income statement, basically. So for the first three quarters of the year, the general fund has expended about 2.7 million. That's about 72% of total budgeted expenditures. If we were exactly on budget, we would be at 75%, obviously three quarters. Revenues of 3.75 million have been recognized. Last year at this time, we had blown through only 67% of the budget at this time, so we're a little bit ahead, but we're also ahead in revenue. The school lunch fund has brought in over 55K and expended 85K, so on its own, it has an operational deficit of about $30,000. Again, like I said, with the, with the $40,000 coming in from the general fund, we should, if trends continue, we will net to about a $0 surplus or deficit within that fund, which is, which is ideal, pretty much. Sebago School has taken in about $293,000 in grant revenue to date. This is primarily S R 3 funding. That was the final round of COVID funding, the American Rescue Plan, and last year, we spent the bulk of it, so S R 3 was the only remaining COVID money we had for FY 22. Other than that, it's the annual Title I and local entitlement funding that we get every And then just a little bit, $8,300 has been raised and/or received through fundraising or donations in several other smaller student activity funds, which I will also circle back to. Also in these, in this packet on page three, there's another one of those budgetary comparison schedules. This one is just for the first nine months of FY 22. If the school is exactly on budget, the percentage remaining in each of those budget lines would be 25%. Most of them, most of the cost centers right now are ahead of budget, meaning in the percentage remaining, it's greater than 25%. The notable exception there is the facilities maintenance line. There were quite a few large and unanticipated expenditures that came through last summer. You guys might be able to remember better than me. I want to say the paving, maybe?
Paving and water are our two big ones.
So that line has kind of taken a big hit, but other than that, it seems like the other budget lines are doing fine. The only other one that looks overspent is debt service, but that should come in right on budget at the end of the year. We really only have just the spring interest payment for the bond with, that we paid to MSAT 61 in the spring. So at year-end, that'll level it up. Regular instruction is currently ahead of budget, which is particularly helpful because I think Mark touched upon this, the 5% budget transfers at year-end if we need it. If any of those individual cost centers come in under, or overspent, we can transfer up to 5% of available unspent budgets from other cost centers to help cover that deficit in that line. And special education, it's ahead of budget, which is miraculous right now. I think it, this number, what is it right now? At 518,000 year-to-date actual expenditures, I think that just validates the large increase in that budget from FY 21 to 22. I think it was like 580,000 last year, and it jumped up to 747 this year, which I don't know if anyone even noticed or had a connection to it. I don't know. But it seems like we're on pace with that budgeted amount, so. And I guess my last point there is if trends continue, the general fund is likely to come in slightly ahead of budget, again, similar to last year. We did budget to use about 77,000 of fund balance, but if we come in ahead of budget, we actually won't even have to tap into that 77,000. So whatever we come in as a surplus will add to, that goes directly into our unassigned fund balance. And then if it's ahead of budget, there's $0 budgeted to be used. So it'll be that 77,000 that we budgeted to use, but we didn't use, plus whatever the surplus is for FY 22 will be our unassigned fund balance, and will give you the flexibility to transfer more money into that reserve. And then the last two pages are the individual funds that make up those other governmental funds. Pretty much like the first half are the student activity funds, and then the bottom half are the federal reimbursement grants. So yeah, there's 300, just over $300,000 in revenues that we've taken in outside of the general fund, and we've expended about 300. So the net there is really only a difference of, you know, three grand, maybe. Yeah, that's about. Anyone have any questions?
Committee questions?
You did a really good job explaining that. Thank you.
I'm the best. Professor, you're.
So we can look forward to annual report out on the audit, and hopefully in a timelier way.
Yeah, well, I mean, we gave Peter the financial back in September, so it took him until March to finish. He's not the fastest, but he's good auditor. I like him.
It loses some of its power in budget development when it comes in after the budget's developed. So we write, excuse me, write it off as a COVID thing, and hope for the best.
Well, I do certainly understand the traditional view of, well, we need to have the audit. I've done it as part of the budget development because it does provide you assurance that what you're looking at is fairly stated. And for, you know, normal school departments, I would say that that's reasonable because the finance directors are not professional accountants, and so most of them do need adjustments, lots of adjustments, speaking from my own experience as an auditor of other schools. But here with us, yeah, even though it's not.
I like where this is going, Mark.
You can still be reasonably assured that it's fairly stated, whether or not you have somebody else's opinion on it or not, but I certainly get it. We will definitely make sure we talk to Peter about it as it's coming here.
Thank you both.
Yes.
Appreciate you making the trip up, down, or across, and.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks.
Talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely pay attention to those ducky signs.
That's a reminder for us.
I'm guilty.
Yeah. That's going to be one of our goals this year.
I know, working on it.
We are up to principals report.
All right. So we were able to visit in person with almost all of our parents during parent-teacher conferences. Those who weren't able to join us in person were contacted via phone or had a virtual meeting. Our Spolastic Book Fair, which was held during that week, was another success. I would like to thank Willow Timothy for taking over the running of the book fair. With the combined proceeds from prior book fairs and this book fair, teachers were able to spend up to $200 at the fair on books for their classrooms. Teachers buying books at the book fair, like kids in a candy shop, and they were very excited. Pre-K and kindergarten screening is coming up on May 17th. Shelley will be mailing out the packets this week to all families who have signed up. She's just waiting for the final calendar to send that out. Any family that has a pre-K or kindergarten-aged child is encouraged to sign up as soon as possible for an appointment. The Portland Sea Dogs held School Staff Appreciation Week, Games last week. I was able to secure a bunch of tickets for staff and many were able to attend the game, or games, actually. Those who were able to go early were able to get out on the field to see their names up on the big screen, which is always fun. I've been there on the field. It's a pretty neat perspective. We have received our preliminary allotments for the title grants for next year. Title I is $20,746. Title II is $4,204.61. And Title IV is $10,000. Basically, our funds are similar to what we've been getting for the past few years. And in response to some concerns about our second step, social emotional learning program, I have placed the teacher materials for everybody to view. The materials cannot leave the school. However, I encourage any student's family or member of the school community to reach out to me and we can set up a time for a more in-depth review of the program.
Thank you. Thanks, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Okay. In lieu of a chairwoman's report, there is a part of a public comment that was made at our last regular meeting that I am going to ask Chris Carrier to read something in reference to that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm speaking on behalf of the school board, both as a parent of two kids and a veteran educator of 15 years, in response to the comment that was made regarding separating children based on ability within the public school setting. We felt it was important that we address it publicly. It is something I definitely feel passionate about and I know the teachers in this room likely do as well. Inclusion of all children in public schools is not negotiable. It's not debatable. We do not condone discrimination of any kind for any reason. Especially in a tiny town like ours, school can be the heart of a community. Without inclusivity of all children, that sense of community is deeply fractured. Every child who walks through these doors deserves the right to an equal education in the least restrictive environment possible, regardless of disability, race, language, religion, gender, socioeconomic status, or any other reason. This is what it means to be a public school. Diversity within our classrooms mirrors the wider world and the needs of every learner is of equal value. Children go to school every day all across this country. As parents, guardians, community members, obviously, we understand that they go to school to learn traditional academics, like we all did, reading, writing, math, science. It's important to note that it's not as simple as filling their heads with knowledge. They aren't cogs in a machine. Human beings are far more complex than that. At any given time, our kids have unique talents, interests, strengths, and struggles, unmet needs, and traumas. These myriad needs are constantly changing. Learning is never linear. It's not a one-size-fits-all endeavor. Within the walls of any public school, larger life skills are happening all of the time. Our kids are learning how to interact with one another, how to treat other human beings, regardless of our similarities or differences. In healthy schools, children learn the academic curriculum while simultaneously gaining the skills, we hope, of empathy and compassion, respect and responsibility, to win and lose with grace, to trust and take risks, to advocate for themselves, and we hope to advocate for one another. I will reiterate with emphasis that creating a true community of learners starts with inclusion. Our kids deserve to feel valued, safe, and worthy. This means a commitment to providing what they need to be successful and being inclusive of all children. There is room to improve here at SES and schools all over the country, but schools everywhere are charged to provide truly equitable education for all, without exception.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we are up to action items. This 2223 school calendar, do I have a motion to table that until our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, thanks. Do I have a second? Any discussion about that?
Probably just for people to know where we're tabling it because I had mentioned in the last meeting that they had increased one half-day-a-month to two. So we'd asked about what other options are there? Because we have parents that, you know, it's tough to find daycare. We Sebago doesn't have any daycare options, so we want to table it so the superintendent can hopefully find another option. Is there a better way for the teachers to still meet and get their work done, but also for the children to stay in school and have longer days?
Thank you. That was well said, Maggie. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor? Okay, reappearance of probationary teachers and first-year continuing contract teachers for the 2223 school year.
So I'm hoping that in our packets are a set of lists that begin with reappearance of probationary teachers and first-year continuing contract teachers for the 2223 school year staple packet. I cannot speak highly enough about the individuals whose names are on this list. Would ask you to take this as a consent item and vote on the entire list as one. And the first one is our teachers. We have a number of teachers who are on probation in their probationary period. That is in the state of Maine, the first two years in a new district, all except for Jordana Reese, who might be the last teacher in the state of Maine who's still on a three-year probationary contract. But we look forward to her joining us next year and then continuing contract the year after.
Okay. So I need a motion, preferably to accept them as a group?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. There we go. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. That's great. The second one is our staff covered under the collective bargaining educational support personnel agreement. I would ask that we also vote on this as one agenda item, but I would ask that we vote as revised. Jamie Payne is actually in EdTech 2, so she would move to EdTech 2, joining Ashley Russo there.
So do I have a motion as revised?
So moved.
Okay, and a second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. And the third is for our employees covered under the non-teaching employee collective bargaining agreement. These are good to go. Again, proud to bring these names forward and just want to point out that we are looking forward to Raymond joining us again next year, Ron coming back, and our Michelle Stoseley-Driver and Tammy Robinson being part of our transportation team in a time when it's tough to find transportation staff who are quality and reliable.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. And then the fourth is for staff who are not covered under any of our three collective bargaining agreements. Those would include our Director of Special Services, Kate Sterling, our most excellent administrative assistant, Kathy Garrish, and then a couple of stipended positions or additional duty positions. So Jenny Null chairs our teacher recertification team and Jenny Null is available to mentor new staff as needed. And then Lisa Ryan is our school physician and school health advisor. Again, I'd ask to take this as one action item.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Are we doing F or not doing F?
We are not doing F.
Okay. We are not doing F, Alan.
Which was my second agenda adjustment, which I forgot.
Yeah, we forgot that.
Since we didn't adjust it at the beginning, we probably should have a motion to table it for next time.
That would be great. That's a good way to do it.
That is a good way to do it. Do we have a motion to table?
Motion to table?
Thank you.
A second?
One second.
Okay.
Any discussion on that one? Seeing none? All in favor?
Thank you. We're super close to that one being complete.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute.
And our added?
Yes, we have our added one, G.
And I'd ask Kirsten Goff to speak to this, please.
Right. So this is an out-of-state field trip that is being requested. Do you have your copy, David?
Two.
By our DT teacher. So I'm just going to read what she shared, just be following policy IJOA. This is from Linda Hoffman. I am requesting your approval for a field trip. I am planning with the support of the Maine Environmental Education Association, from whom I received a grant to support outdoor education for students I work with at Sebago Elementary School. MEEA's enhances and amplifies the efforts of individuals and organizations building environmental awareness, appreciation, understanding, and action in Maine. The students have been studying animal behavior throughout the year with use of a trail camera and by taking nature walks in Sebago. We would like to culminate our year with a field trip to Squam Lake Science Center, 23 Science Center Road in Holderness, New Hampshire. The students will be visiting and exploring open meadows, mature forests, and marsh boardwalks connecting interactive natural exhibits where native animals reside, including black bears, mountain lions, river otters, bobcats, and more. The students included in the trip would be one third-grade student, two fourth-grade students, and two fifth-grade students, each accompanied by one of their parents. This would be a full school day trip on a Monday in May to be decided. We will leave after school begins when Ron, who has agreed to do our field trips for us this year, is available to drive us on a school bus and return before the end of the school day. The field trip will be financed by the MEEA grant, including admission and meals. Respectfully, Linda Hoffman.
Sounds like fun. Okay.
I would definitely move this one.
Good idea. So we need a motion?
Can I enthusiastically move to give permission for this?
Sure.
I will show that, note that.
Please do.
We need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Great.
Do we have any discussion items?
Do not.
I don't know what's not on here. Okay. But it's on.
But we'll do it.
But it's on here, so we're going to do it.
Yep.
Do we have items for future agendas? I think the couple of items that we tabled.
Calendar's coming back.
So the calendar and...
We've got three items to come back and I'll get those to Kathy.
Excellent. Thank you, Alan. Okay. And before I go to public comment, information items, future meetings. We're having a workshop on May 24th at 6:30 with our regular meeting at 7:00 following. And then in June, our workshop is on June 28th at 6:30 with our regular meeting following at 7:00. Okay. All right. So we have done...
And the only question I had to know was the June 28th, that's going to be in the library, I would assume.
I would assume so.
And do you want to list the town meeting, school board session?
When's that going to be?
Oh, I have it on my calendar.
May 3rd.
Town meeting?
No, June 3rd.
Oh, town meeting is the 31st and then... What's on June 3rd? What?
No, May 3rd is when we present the warrants to the select board and they sign off.
Okay.
The town meeting is June...
The town meeting you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the 31st of May.
May 31st.
Yeah.
And then the budget validation referendum is election day in June, which is the 14th.
Yeah.
Okay. We probably should list those on the calendar.
Select board meeting, present... What are we doing, presenting the budget warrant?
Mm-hmm.
I'll have to add that to my calendar. There we go. Okay. Okay. All right. So just a reminder, we're going to move on to our non-agenda public comment. Just a reminder of what I read through on the policy earlier in the meeting. And Joc, you are up first. And I am going to limit everybody to two minutes.
I'm going to use my time to build a chart.
Okay. But each individual has two minutes.
So she can't hear four minutes.
Do you need four minutes? Well, we will see how it goes.
Bailey Jo Karwowski, 29 Valley Lane. So there you go. And just my concerns I brought up at last month's meeting about the social emotional learning here at the school and how when the programs were brought in, they weren't called by policy. School board policy was stated on your website that anytime you're going to add or take away a curriculum, that you're going to notify parents in the community about that. But after reading through a bunch of old board minute meetings, I had found back in February of 2019, the zones of regulation and social learning were brought in on a board meeting, a presentation was made, and the board had voted on it and passed it. Then there was another one, second step, that came in back in May 2020 about COVID funds for $3,000. Again, another presentation from a couple of the teachers, the special ed teachers, occupational therapists. It was presented, it was voted on and passed at that meeting. So I'd like to know why you're calling policy? So I'd like to know why you don't follow policy by not informing the public and the parents about these programs coming into the school.
So I'm going to refer you to our superintendent, and I would encourage you to schedule a meeting with him so that he can answer any and all of your questions.
But that's the answer that you gave me last month as well. So you're the board, and you actually were on the meetings for both of those minutes, and you had passed and approved it at your meeting.
Have you had an opportunity to look through the program?
Oh, I really dissected it very well online, and these programs are not meant for the normal child. These are programs that are made specifically for children with special needs, which is ADHD, autism, retardation, other kinds of disabilities. These programs are not meant-
So I'm going to stop you there, and this conversation is done, your public comment is done. Okay, I will encourage you one more time to contact the superintendent, have a meeting, sit down, and ask all the questions that you need to ask, and he will do his best to get you the answers to those, okay?
I've already found my answers.
Okay, but thank you for your comments.
I'll take one.
Joc, would you like your two minutes?
I'd just like to know if the superintendent has had an opportunity to post on the website and in the curriculum the addition of SEL programs.
So I just, and again, not going to engage much. I think one of the most important pieces when we are interacting is to understand words in the same way. So curriculum, when we refer to it, is, whether it's in board policy or state law, is a set of standards that we expect students to learn. Programs are materials, instructional materials, educational materials that are used to help students achieve those standards, to meet those goals in the curriculum. So on our website, we have the school committee-approved curriculum for each grade level, content areas, and highlights in them. So that is something that is there. Public, important, that's where public input is taken. So through the policy and the development, the curriculum is established. Program materials are operational. They are sometimes carry a budget number. The school committee will be involved when they're spending money, that's part of their job. Program materials change over time. So, Bill, Joe, what you pointed out in your board presentations, committee presentations, were program materials, not curriculum. Program materials are something that we as a school, as educators, are charged with reviewing, identifying, sharing, and then monitoring. Is this giving us what we want as students learn towards it? Curriculum is a set of standards and goals that they work towards. Program materials, instructional materials are looked at separately when it comes to policy. And so that, you know, again, Bill, Joe, originally when you called question, I shared the policies related to curriculum development and adoption, as well as instructional materials. Happy to share those again if you want. But, you know, in the public comment section going forward, we are ready to listen, but not engage.
So specifically on one of those sites for the social-emotional learning-
So, I'm sorry, your time is up. Norma?
Well, under that curriculum, social-emotional learning should be listed, and it is not listed. And there's a lot that comes in under social-emotional learning that doesn't belong in the hands of the government or the school. It belongs at home with parents. So there's some very serious concerns about things that are being brought within the school system, taught to our children, that parents are very unaware of. And I do believe that if the parents were aware of some of the things that are included in this program that are not obviously discussed, that they would not approve of it. But they haven't got an opportunity, because first of all, they're very busy. They don't come, obviously, to the meetings to listen to what you pass so quickly, and nobody has a chance to say anything. And yet, those children are our future tomorrow, and the parents are losing the opportunity to teach their children their morals, their ethical backgrounds that should be taught at home, not school.
Thank you.
I think it needs to be addressed in some way. And another thing, it's almost impossible to interact with the board, to work with the board, to help our children learn what is the value of an American family. If there are special needs, that's different, that should be separated and taught to those children.
All the other public schools have a special need separate.
If you continue to interrupt, then I will ask you to leave.
You're asking us to-
Thank you for your comments, Norma. I was referring my comment to Billy Joe.
We will all leave.
Well, I read the procedures for public comment. Would I, shall I go back?
We understand that.
Okay, all right.
And you cut her off, which is your prerogative to do. But it's lousy under the circumstances for you to do that, because she was making a point, and you stopped her.
It is the prerogative of the chair to determine-
I know it's your prerogative. I'm talking about communication with the public.
And I am encouraging her to contact our superintendent who can-
We are the public.
Yes, you are the-
About communication with the public.
Hey, Mary Ann?
Okay, I'll give my time to Mabel.
I was going to speak the same thing, like Joc was talking about what is being taught, what was being taught in all the schools.
Mabel?
Pardon? My name is Mabel Olden. I live on 428 Kimball Corner Road.
Thank you.
Been here 51 years.
And I forgot to have Joc and Norma do that.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry.
I just wanted to state things that there was talked already about, the critical race theory, what's going on in a lot of all of our schools. And I give the kudos to the moms, they call them the Moms of America, and they got groups together all over that banned this critical race theory and the LGBTQ theory of children not being, feeling good about themselves and looking for operate surgery and all that. And I would like to say too that six states, Indiana, Louisiana, Tennessee, Oklahoma, Texas, and Florida have all banned, their governors have banned, along with the people, that these should be taken out of the curriculum or whatever's being taught in the schools that our kids are learning, kindergarten, preschoolers. They're too young to understand what's going on. If this is taught to them at that young age, it's going to go along with them right through their lives, believing that race is to be separated. Why we had segregation years ago, now it's being worse, because they're putting race into that. It's separate from white and black now. Everything is either black or the white, and it shouldn't be. And the kids are getting different theories on this, and being young the way they are, they don't really understand it, but it is being taught to them, and all over the country. And I know it's the government that's putting these rules into the schools, these teachings into the schools. And as a grandmother, great-grandmother, mother, I had four children, seven grandchildren at school, and one great-grandchild. And it's been a beautiful school, I love this little school. But I'm worried about if this is going to go through, it's going through all the schools, it's got to be stopped. And I think parents, and it should be open to the public when we have these meetings, so that everybody hears what's going on, so you're not shut off. Like, to me, this is an important subject. Parents should have the right to stand up and talk and say, as long as they're within reason.
As long as they're not taking an entire population of the human race and putting them in a box.
Well, I'm not doing that, but it's in the schools. The population, the children, our children. They're all doing it, and it's, they're in a lot, basically, in the school.
This school isn't doing that.
I don't know.
Thank you, Mabel. Tina?
Yes. Tina Van Ness for you to Sebago Row. Two topics, okay? Do I have time for both, I mean, for each one? Or do I have to incorporate each one?
Just be quick.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Okay. The first one I wanted to speak to was social-emotional learning. I was approached with a statement that knocked me backwards, that said, you know, the question was asked, "Do you feel safe sitting in a daddy's lap?" And my mouth dropped and said, gee, I know, as well as I know my own name, that that is not something that would be asked in a classroom. And I come in on Fridays to work with Ted's kids, and I sat in the teacher's room, and you had six mouths go. That is a question in therapy, okay? So just to clear that up. I think the concerns of the people in the community was that it's taking time away from academic learning, and it's interfering with parental beliefs and teachings. I spoke with three of the teachers on the committee that researched the program. And as I went back in the minutes, I was chairman of the committee when we passed it, so I thought I had some responsibility to look into it. I trusted their professional judgment and their ability to realize what was needed for this community and the best program going. And there were several programs that they looked at, and they felt that this was the best one. And there are several other school districts in the area that are using it. It's based on educational research, focusing on what children need to be successful learners throughout their educational experience. Too many kids come to school today not prepared. Johnny and Suzie may know their colors, but they don't know how to listen, they don't know how to share. It's not trying to interfere with parental beliefs and parental rights. What it's trying to do, and as you said, Wendy, so beautifully, this is not a private school, it's a public school. We are legally bound to take every child where they are, bring them together as a cohesive group to function in an academic setting. The thing I loved the best about, I came down and spent, and got the program, and I spent a couple hours reading through. It's a canned program. Any elementary teacher worth their salt is already teaching this. This is canned. There's a format, you can pick and choose. It's great for a first-year teacher, they can follow it step for step. The more experienced teachers are going to take what they want here. This doesn't go so well in the fifth grade, it did in the kindergarten. So they can mix and match and pick and choose, okay, how they're going to do it. It has that flexibility. The other, the major thing I liked about it was that as they proceeded to go on to new skills, they loop, it loops back and picks up previously taught skills. So it's reinforcement of what they've already learned, and there is a common language throughout the grades. So the fifth-grade teacher is talking to a third-grade student, it's the same language. The kids, it's nothing new to the kids, what the teachers say. And the one thing I liked in the pre-kindergarten program was the attention scope. Teacher says, "I want your attention," they do this. Well, you can't see much, except what's in front of you, okay? So I don't think that would go over so big for the fifth grade, but for the kindergarten, I thought it was cute.
Tina, I'm giving, Tina, I'm giving you the time.
Beg your pardon?
You're running out of time.
I'm timed, all right, I'll shut up. The parent, I encourage parents to come in and read, see the programs, okay? I don't know if any of you have had time to do it or not, but they're here, as Houston said, make arrangements. Come in, it's good stuff. Okay, I'll shut up.
Thank you. And Chris?
Chris Valchunas, 457 Kimball Corner Road. And my question last time, and I guess it didn't fit, was on the school budget. I thought that when we retired our debt from sad '60 month, that poor pot of money would then go into LICO. Our down payment on renovating, not patching up, not fixing the plumbing, not fixing the roof, but actually putting on an addition or doing something to renovate this school. And I didn't see that in the budget. And it kind of like, because there wasn't a category for it, we can't do it. So it got put into the fixing up, the plumbing, and any other emergencies. But I feel that for this town and how we have paid for every other school to be renovated, I want to put my down payment, and we're not going to take it if the thing, if we have to live in 60-degree, or we can't get a new car. That money for our down payment for renovation stays in that pot. And that's what I wanted to speak about last time, and that's what I thought we were going to do with that money.
Okay, thank you, Chris. David?
So, thank you for giving the opportunity for us to say, one of the warrants that the town will be voting on at the meeting is to establish a designated reserve fund using unspent money, funded up to $100,000 this year, as that down payment. So our reduction in debt service, I think, is about $8,000 this year. We're never going to, $8,000 enough to do anything big. But by managing the budget so that we have a little extra at the end of every year, and going for that big chunk of designated reserve, we feel like that's the first step to doing exactly what you said, Chris. So it will be, I think, the final warrant article to establish a reserve fund for capital improvement and facility maintenance, and fund up to $100,000 in this current year. So thank you.
Our address is 224 Anderson Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joc.
I forgot to say that.
Well, I forgot to ask you.
I didn't put my name down.
You have a question? Okay. Hang on, Tina.
So my name is Kelly Hale.
I'll write your name.
Steven through. I, maybe for future meetings, could we discuss possibly having sixth grade stay in Sebago?
Would you like that as an agenda item?
Yes, please.
Again, thank you for the segue. So, one, you know, our workshop today before the meeting, the committee looked at the policies that establish how we do our meetings, everything from agenda development to communications. What we realized is we actually don't have a really great, clear way for the community to ask for something to be put on the agenda. So, community members are always welcome to contact individual committee members and ask for that. But we are going to bring forward a form that would let somebody like you, or like you, say, "I would like this to be an agenda item." It will go to the chair, and the chair will put it into the development process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify one point? To contact us via school board emails or through the appropriate channels?
School board emails.
Tried that, but they don't work. Takes you to a site that's seen. Only yours and Wendy, you can email through your site. Try to email you or you, and it takes you to-
I haven't received anything from you.
Maybe that's why.
Can't.
So that should be looked into.
Yeah.
On it, on it.
I'll fix that.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill Joe.
Yes, thank you for letting us know, because that's important to know.
I know, so I tried to reach out and got denied.
Okay. Tina, you had one more comment?
I'll stay in the script.
Okay.
I wrote it up so I won't get lost, okay? David's looking at me. "I believe that one of the guiding forces in the SES independence was to have a voice in its own destiny. At that point in time, the physical plant needed major repairs. The curriculum teachers were using, were forced to use was not effective. Teachers required, were required to keep incremental logs of their daily activities. The administrator was forced-" incremental logs of their daily activities, the administrator was forced to enforce mandates she didn't agree with, and then had to work with the fallout of these mandates. As a school committee, we vowed to listen to our staff, administration, and community. Teachers took the lead in evaluating curriculum, administrators set the course for evaluating academic growth, and the community backed the whole process. There was open communication between staff and administration in all aspects of school operations to ensure safe learning environment. The community felt that we heard their concerns, even though they didn't always like what the ultimate outcome might have been, but they felt heard. Then last spring, a major change, a shift occurred. Administration was no longer heard, staff was no longer heard, only a small vocal group of citizens started pushing their own agenda. Decisions were made with severe myopic vision, the superintendent was let go, the principal, who was the keystone to the development of this district, was never truly rewarded for the work that she did. Her efforts and accomplishments were taken for granted. The staff's plea to keep the superintendent and advance her position were ignored. Now she is leaving, and here we are. How much more do you feel a district can lose before major questions start arising? Is the school committee listening? Or is the school committee engulfed in some utopian vision that was once a community-driven vision, now morphed into the vision of a few? At present, it appears that the few are not hearing the community. What others say may not be what you want to hear, but as publicly elected officials, it is your responsibility and duty to listen, evaluate, reevaluate, and what has been said, and then move on. Here's where the communication piece comes in. Communication not only involves words, but body language as well. Many times, body language speaks louder than words, rolling of the eyes, hand gestures, positioning of the arms and the body. These have all been demonstrated at meetings, making others feel unheard, unimportant, in general, giving people a sense of being on the outside rather than a part of a community district. Leadership means responsibility, not power. Leadership, a true leader, is an individual who enables others to participate in a process where everyone has a sense of importance and success. An individual who sees leadership as having power will ultimately fail and destroy the very thing that needs to be accomplished. I'm asking you to please reevaluate yourselves and set a better course of interaction with parents, staff, and community, because the present course is not doing what you want and need it to do. Thank you.
Do it here.
I guess you're very, I think you do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina, for your comments. Okay, Alan?
Okay. I see Claudia Lowe wrote on this space, but not on this space.
Oh, wait, where did you, did you sign up?
Yes, she did.
Where?
On her, on the signup sheet, not on this sheet.
Oh, the sign-in sheet?
Yep, yep. And she says she wants to talk about Splice and library.
Oh, can I have that back, please?
You may.
Thank you. All right, so, non-agenda? All right, Claudia.
Two different hats. I'm a member of Splice.
So wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Full name and street address.
Claudia Lowe, 591 Anderson Road.
Thank you.
All right, two different hats. Splice, I'm a member of Splice, which is Sivago Partners in Community Education, and we just wanted to kind of recap a number of things that we've done and what we hope to do. You may have noticed that the COVID tree is back to being a real tree. Of course, when it started, nobody realized how long that would go, and how many hearts would accumulate, and that was getting to be a bit distressing for some of the kids, and it was time, so all the hearts are gone. In the past, we redid the gardens, and that's when I discovered that you actually have a wind tunnel going through here, so the first winter, many did not survive. We planted a lot of those, and fingers crossed, for this spring. We planted a couple of shrubs in front of the tanks, so we'll no longer be known as the Dead River School, once they get a little bigger. Took the shutters down, that was kinda scary to watch, we enlisted our husbands to take the shutters down, repainted the shutters, put them back up, and the front door was painted, so now it looks a little bit spiffier, despite the siding still being old. Helped with Fall Fest, put on Lantern Walk, which was a lot of fun, worked with Mrs. McGinnis and the kids in the art class, making the lanterns, and every child who was here got one. We've tried to work with the PTC, coordinating with those, and we hope to work with other groups in the future, and our next thing is we're gonna try to work on after-school programming, at the urging of our superintendent, which is much needed. Second half, as a member of the library, we have missed having the kids come over, COVID interrupted that for probably almost two years at this point, and we've finally added some more hours back in, got enough volunteers to do that, and masks are optional now, but we realize that it's late in the year, teachers have got a lot to catch up on, so looking towards next year, I would love to meet with the teachers and go over what has been done in the past, is it useful, is there a way we can make it better, things that we can do to make it better time. I would like kids to realize there are libraries after they leave school, and your library is awesome, but is there something that we can do? Can I come over and talk to you guys sometime about what we can do for next year and get them back over there? So, yeah. Okay.
Yay. Do you wanna mention Storytime?
Pardon?
Do you wanna mention Storytime?
Storytime is starting up on Monday. We have a volunteer who's going to run it, she was a kindergarten teacher for eight years, it's gonna be every Monday, 10 to 10:30 is the youngest, up until 2:00, and then 10:30 to 11:00 will be for the three and four-year-olds, and there'll be a little craft time and Storytime. Excited about that. And I also just put on Facebook today a whole list of programming through the summer, so, stuff going on again, fun way.
Yay.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you, Claudia.
For all of what Splice does to help the school, the library, it's easy to complain, but you're like, you're really trying to find ways to help.
Yes.
Thank you.
And can I make a comment about CRT?
Sure.
I think a lot of people have come to a misunderstanding about what CRT is. It was started back many years ago in college, by college professors, and it was meant as a study of looking at how race has affected, or how policies in the US were determined by race or affected by race. And that was everything from moving Native Americans off their, onto reservations, to taking Japanese-Americans out of their homes and putting them in internment camps during World War II, to redlining, segregation, slavery, it was history, it was all the things, the Holocaust. And it's been kind of co-opted and turned into something where we're presuming that white children are going to be, feel like it's their fault for things that have happened in the past. And I'm sorry that it's gone that far, I've even heard of some districts where they're using that to take money away from public schools and try to repurpose that into private education under this supposition that that's, these things are being taught in school. What it is, is history, and if you don't teach history, it becomes repeated. It's gone so far as to have, one principal was told that if in their high school they taught the Holocaust, they had to teach an alternative. How do you do that? I don't think it's a big thing in the elementary school, whatever's taught here is the truth, and it's age-appropriate, so I don't know why we're so cranked up about it.
Thank you, Claudia.
Did I make a comment?
Nope. We have an executive session, and I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'm in the latter layer session.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
At 8:42.
Okay.
And David, you'll send me the good stuff, right?
I will, and you know we canceled the first executive session. You know we canceled the first executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha.